All right, good evening, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held June 1st, 2021 at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. If we could please have our deputy clerk take the role.
Councilmember Weldon.
Here.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Carratt.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hulse.
Here.
Mayor Olinsky.
Here. Thank you. And please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, next on the agenda is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager. The public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Do we have any council members with anything to report?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
On Saturday, myself, Councilmembers Weldon, Henry, and Michaels attended the memorial service for veterans at the Cottonwood Veterans Memorial Park, and we had a nice turnout. There was some recognition of some volunteers that had been working with the Marine Corps organization here locally, and it was a real nice attended operation. We hung a new flag. The old flag was put up for sale. I don't know if they were able to sell it, but it was just a nice experience.
Good. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
So yesterday, we had a rally down at the corner of 89A and 260 from 10 to 12. A bunch of citizens showed up with flags and different signs, basically just showing their support for our law enforcement, and so that was really great to see that. So if you ever get a chance and you see them, just tell them you appreciate what they're doing. Thank you.
Go on.
In addition to the beautiful service at the Military Service Park, several of us, Vice Mayor Hulse, Councilmember Narin, our mayor, as well as myself, attended the Police Department Awards. These were the annual awards, several life-saving awards. It was really, really great to hear and inspiring to hear about the heroisms that some of our local officers exhibited this last 12 years, 12 months of service. I attended the Airport Master Planning Committee, and then there were multiple. Councilmember Weldon, I believe Vice Mayor Hulse, Councilmember Matthews, I believe, also attended the public meeting on the initial, really beginning process of the airport master planning process. I did want to highlight the direct economic impact that the airport brings into our community. That total economic impact was $19.1 million, with the direct economic impact of $10.6 million, and that's just here at our little airport in Cottonwood. It is a significant impact. The mayor and I met with several local hotel owners and managers to discuss their questions and concerns about how the city is spending their bed tax dollars. I think we might hear a little bit about that tonight when we hear from Ms. Lewis and Ms. Herman on their presentation. Looking forward to that. I thought it was a good conversation, but it was a reminder to me that we need to be having these conversations, and that if folks are interested in how we're spending your tax dollars, please reach out. We'll meet with you. We'll get you the information that you need. I also attended the Verde Valley Transportation Planning Organization meeting, really just provided a brief update on Mingus and the Willard sidewalk updates, I think, for other local communities that I report back to council. The Yavapai Apache Nation is resuming their transit operations services between the nation and Cottonwood, which had been suspended for a significant period of time. And then, of course, the CMAR was approved for the parking garage in Uptown Sedona, which they're really hopeful will help alleviate some of their parking challenges, and that's all I had to update. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Real quick, I, in addition to Councilmember Weldon, I attended the nonprofit coalition meeting that we had on the 26th, and I just kind of want to give an update that this is a meeting that has come out of our December planning meeting from council because we have some concerns about gaps in service and overlapping services. And so we had a really good first meeting with several of the nonprofits. They're very interested in this to be an ongoing thing and to solve these problems, and so we will be meeting monthly to that end.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other council members? No? All right, Mr. Corbin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make some announcements. The summer reading program at the Cottonwood Public Library starts today. Parents can track their children's reading using the Read Squared app on their phones for free books, fun missions, and other cool prizes. On May 31st, Cottonwood Fire Department held the first annual Memorial Day Walk of Honor to honor our country's veterans and those who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms. The event was organized and developed by Captain Jeff Boyd and received support from the Cottonwood firefighters and Ms. Trainer, wife of utility staff member Mike Trainer. Pictures will be included in this week's management report. Beanbags for Kids sake fundraiser is an event that supports Yavapai Big Brothers and Big Sisters. The event will take place on Saturday, June 19th, at the Verde Valley Fairgrounds, 800 East Cherry Street. It is a family fun day with a cornhole tournament and food trucks, plus vendors at the Resource Fair with United Way and Cottonwood Chamber. You can register to play in the Beanbags for Kids tournament at kbcornhole.com/azbigs. This month's rotating artist exhibit is Southwest Expressions by Barbara Donahue. Representational art is her focus, and she is a self-proclaimed colorist using vivid colors in her southwest paintings. Her art will be displayed during the month of June at the Cottonwood Council Chambers Building, Monday through Friday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Access to the exhibit through the City Clerk's office, 824 North Main Street. The Cottonwood Airport Commission Wednesday, tomorrow night, has been canceled. The next meeting will be Wednesday, July 7th, at, I believe, 6:00 o'clock here in the chambers. The Cottonwood Historic Preservation Commission will hold a special meeting on Wednesday, June 9th, at 6:00 PM at this location. I know, two pager today. Lots going on in Cottonwood, though. The outdoor pool and youth center open for their summer activities this week and will provide full programming through the end of July before transitioning into a reduced schedule for the school season. The Cottonwood Vintage Run is set to take place Saturday, June 12th. Registration is still open, but will be closing very shortly. Tomorrow morning, Parks and Recreation will meet with Yavapai Anti-Tobacco Coalition of Youth to receive a new ashtray for Riverfront Park as part of their continued efforts to raise awareness for their project, Educating Against the Use of Tobacco. June 25th and 26th, we are set to host one of the largest youth softball tournaments we have had, with a current estimated attendance of 44 teams. A few years ago, we purchased temporary fencing that would allow us to offer eight fields with 200 fencing, 200 feet fencing marking, making Cottonwood a select designation, destination that can offer that many fields all in one location. This has made Cottonwood a destination for many large tournaments, as we continue to see more requests for the use. And then finally, the Cottonwood Clippers started their season this morning with over 60 swimmers on their A and A prep teams and are expecting a number approaching 100 between their B and C teams this evening. The Clippers practice Monday through Friday all summer long, with a few Saturdays scattered in for meets and small events. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you. All right, before we get into the bulk of the meeting here, it's bound to be a long meeting, so I'd ask everyone here to please turn off your phones if it's on. We'd appreciate that very much, and we don't have any bathrooms in this facility. We're a bit limited, as you can see, but there are public restrooms that I hope, beyond hope, are open for the public just right across the street if you guys need, so. And when we get to the call to the public, I'll give a few more updates. So we have a presentation first, and this is a review of the city's marketing and tourism efforts in 2021. So pleased that we have 49 folks here to view this this evening and more watching on television, and when the presentation's open, there'll be two more seats available in the council chambers, so that's great.
Well, good evening, Mayor Olinsky, members of the council. I am Tricia Lewis. I am Tourism and Economic Development Director for the City of Cottonwood. I don't know if this is on, but what a great community we have in Cottonwood. It's so exciting to hear all of the updates and announcements that Mr. Corbin just announced, but that's not why I'm here, and I know that's why I feel so privileged and popular tonight. So thank you for showing up for the marketing update. As you all know, the city has been doing the destination marketing. We've been the DMO, as you, as we call it, through the Arizona Office of Tourism. What that means simply is that we are representing Cottonwood from a marketing and tourism perspective to promote it as a destination, a fun place to live, shop, play, dine, and recreate. And we've had a very interesting year. We're gonna let Heather do that.
Oh, sorry.
Matt!
Trying to.
What's going on here?
Got the meetings.
Messing with me, I know. Thanks, Matt. Anyway, we've all had an extremely interesting year. There's no doubt about it. So what I will say is I'm very proud to be here tonight with my friend and coworker and colleague in tourism, Heather Herman, but before I introduce her, I just wanted to share with you something that I found was very interesting when I opened my mail today. We had a limited budget for marketing, and we did, we have done a really amazing job, which we're gonna highlight in just a moment, but some of the things that we have, we've got is just what I call value-added, things that we didn't pay for, that was, you know, editors or travel writers came over here and fell in love with Cottonwood. And that is such an awesome experience to be able to sit back, open my mail today, and I got the first hot-off-the-press official state travel guide from the Arizona Office. This is an official state, you know, document that's travel guide. And it came from editor that said, I don't know how to say his first name, Caradwin Cornelius, but anyway, it's on page 16 now if you want to see it. This is what he said about Cottonwood. Thanks to a group of pioneering wine makers, once sleepy Cottonwood has matured into a gastronomic hotspot. We're gonna have to use that. I like that. Isn't that fun? With its small-town hospitality, riverside scenery, and tasting rooms lining charming old town, this central Arizona idol is a feast for the senses. So it's fun to have that kind of experience. We know people love this community, and they talk about it. So this kind of editorial summation is really great, and I'm gonna, just would like to say that Cottonwood has been getting the attention it deserves, and I think we're very much competitive with our neighboring communities, and we will take full advantage of the culture and the climate we're in today. But I want to pass over the microphone to Heather Herman with Frontburner Media, and she's gonna give us an update on where, the things we've done for the past year. Heather?
Great. Thank you, Tricia.
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you in person, live and in person, and I was gonna say, I can't believe how popular destination marketing is in Cottonwood, but I understand there's something else going to be discussed later on, so I'll try not to take it personally. As a former school board member, I understand what this is like, so speak in your language. So, let's get started. We're going to talk about some of the highlights this evening for the 2021 marketing that we did, and it was an interesting year. We all know that, but we're gonna show you what we accomplished even during COVID. As a professional who's been doing this for over a decade and having done this with multiple destinations across the state of Arizona, I can tell you that what Cottonwood has accomplished with the amount of money that has been spent is really something to celebrate. So we're gonna show you the highlights of the AOT Co-op, the additional advertising we did, the logo redesign, the website, what we're doing with social media, and then our partnership with the SVVTC, and then, of course, what we're doing, working with the media. So let's dive right in. We all know that the Arizona Office of Tourism Co-op is the matching cooperative that we take part in. So $50,000 investment, they invest $50,000, they actually invest more than $50,000, so it's a dollar-for-dollar, a little bit over that investment on our part and theirs. And some of those highlights include some TripAdvisor digital marketing that we've done, the amount of impressions. I won't just read to you from the slides, but I just want to highlight the fact that if we did these campaigns on our own without the partnership, we wouldn't be able to afford them. It would be all of our annual budget spent on one campaign or two campaigns. So the fact that we're able to leverage our buying dollar with the Arizona Office of Tourism, they leverage their buying power as well, and they get the rates lower than we would be able to get them if we just called up and asked. So some of those highlights, and then some of the digital ads that we have, you can see that we focus on wine, but we also focus on our outdoors and the beauty that we have around us. That's one thing that we obviously saw happen during COVID, is people flock to the outdoors, so why not take advantage of what we've got? Some more of our advertising that we've done, we participated in the Grand Canyon Journal, and you may wonder why the Grand Canyon Journal, but everything that we've done in terms of looking at our analytics for our social media and our website, we show that people are traveling either to the Grand Canyon or from the Grand Canyon, so that's a captive audience that we can take advantage of getting. And from this partnership with the Grand Canyon Journal, we actually get email signups. So when they see our ad in their magazine, there's a little postcard that they pull out, and they can click their interest by destination that they read about in the magazine, drop that postcard in the mail, and then the Grand Canyon Journal filters all of that, and they email us sometimes weekly. It's usually about once a month with all of those leads that come through, and from that partnership, we were anticipated to get 4,000 emails. We're actually closer to 6,000 email addresses by the end of this fiscal year. AAA Southern California, we did a half-page ad, and then through our partnership with them, and because we've been advertising, some of the clients that I've been working with, they actually contacted us and gave us a free digital ad in March, and right there, that value is $4,200 if we had had to pay for that, so they gave that to us for free because of our partnership. And then additional ones that we wanted to highlight is Los Angeles Magazine. Obviously, that's in our drive market. AAA is always a winner because you know that those are road trippers that want to be out there and that they're figuring out where they want to go. And then Americanway.com is the new travel site that American Airlines launched, and it's specifically travel-focused, where they have their hubs for American Airlines, so it just makes sense. People are coming flying in on American Airlines into Phoenix, that we would be a part of that travel, escape, road trip option after they leave Phoenix. We did additional advertising as well outside of the AOT Co-op, and I know this is, this is one of my favorites, as well as Tricia's. This map is so dynamic, and it's not just that it comes in print, and they've gone through close to 100,000 of those maps just since they printed them, but they have a, they have a digital presence as well online, and it's a really cool kind of 3D focus where you hover over it and things pop out at you, and it's also got QR codes, and it's just a, it's a great map. It's very user-friendly, and it's easy on the eyes. People love it, even kids. The Arizona Drive Guide, they had their 25th anniversary this year, and thanks to Tricia and I knowing the editor of that magazine, she called us and was perplexed about what to put on the cover of it, and we both said, why wouldn't you put Cottonwood? And how could she say no? So of course, it's on the cover, and she featured some of our great photography and information on the inside as well. That didn't cost us anything, actually. And then the Sedona In Room Directory makes sense. We'd want to capture some of that audience. It's coming from Sedona, things to do, places to go. Hey, you're supposed to quiet that. Phoenix Living Magazine, that's another great one, really great distribution, and our full-page ad that we did on that. And then Green Living Magazine, that's a really wonderful local publication, but they also hit down in the valley. We did two issues there, November and February. And then, of course, the Chamber of Commerce Membership Directory and the Visitor Guide. We partner with them in terms of making sure that people stop at the visitor's center as their first stop, so that they find out everything to do when they get into town. We went through the logo redesign, and I still can't believe how seamless that went. I kid you not. I, after how many, I was trying to think of how many logos I've been a part of, logo projects, and I'm close to about 47, and this was the quickest one I think I've ever been through. You all reached consensus so quickly, and it's great. Even the governor's office has commented on it. It's wonderful, it's refreshing, and you guys should be patting yourselves on the back for that one. The website, again, I hate to keep saying that I can't believe it, but the fact that we launched a logo and a Visit Cottonwood website all in one calendar year is really commendable, and it's refreshing, and our website analytics show that it's working. When we compare what the website analytics were before we had this new site to what we're at now, we've doubled, sometimes tripled, our audience, and we know that they're spending more time on it because they're visiting more pages on the website, and that just reflects towards content and the right kind of design. I love this section on the website. It's called Uniquely Cottonwood. We have that section about where, you know, locals, the businesses that they've started that we think visitors would like to know about. And we all know that Roger Naylor, who writes for the Arizona Republic and is published author, lives here in Cottonwood. He loves Cottonwood, and when we reached out to him and told him that we were starting the new website, I asked him, what would you like to write about it? And he said, I want to write a love letter to Cottonwood, and he did. He wrote a beautiful love letter to Cottonwood that I think everyone wants to read, and it's on our website. I just wanted to highlight some of the highlights of visitation, traffic to the website. The events page is so much more dynamic now with images and fresh content, and it rotates, and it's just, it's refreshing. It's wonderful. Social media, we've obviously increased our presence on social media. We're making sure that we have regular content on Facebook as well as Instagram, and people are drawn to it. I wanted to highlight just some of the advertising that we've done. We've spent less than $500 in terms of advertising. It's so affordable, really easy to reach the demographic that you want, and we've reached over 75,000 users just in this kind of narrow window of time. And then we also partnered with Visit USA Parks. They're a really dynamic program that they actually partner with the Arizona Office of Tourism as well, and we had one of their journalists come, and you can see that these ads are actually in German, and you can see the translated piece underneath, but they're currently running a campaign and targeting the German market because we know that that's going to come back very soon, and the interest level that they're receiving translates into people signing up for more information and website clicks and on and on. The Sedona Verde Valley Tourism Council, that's a cooperative program amongst the communities here. So you've got Sedona, Cottonwood, you've got all the Verde Valley communities, Camp Verde, Jerome, Clarkdale. Everyone pays a portion to be a part of that, and they had been partnering with a marketing firm outside of Washington, DC, and just last year, they decided to take it to local to someone in the state so that there would be more focus about what's going on. So now that we have more of a local focus, we're getting the attention that Cottonwood deserves. So there's blog posts, there's social media posts. Now finally, the media. I wanted to talk about some of the highlights that we've had. We try to showcase these on the Visit Cottonwood website, so if you ever see a story about Cottonwood that talks about, you know, it's a travel writer that's been here, that's mentioning all the things that they experienced and they loved, we include those links on the media page on Visit Cottonwood, and you can see just from the Thrillist article, if we had had to pay for that as a destination, Visit Cottonwood, to be a part of that Thrillist article for 14 million visits per month, the advertising value for that is about $43,000. So you could see how, once you start paying for the things that media are giving to you for, maybe we just have to arrange their itinerary or, you know, their stay, maybe a tour, maybe a hotel room or a meal, it really has value, wonderful value, because we get to sort of control the message of where they're gonna go, what they're going to do, and how they're gonna showcase Cottonwood, and then how many people are going to see that, and really, it's not costing us very much. And we've got wonderful partners in the community that like to participate with that as well. So I know I kind of went quickly. I wanted to leave you with, obviously, Tricia's contact information, who you all know, and myself, and I wanted to answer any questions, if you have any.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Herman. Council, do we have any questions for Ms. Herman or Ms. Lewis?
The only I can say was, I've been involved in this type of thing for several years, and we are so fortunate. This is exceptional. Thanks to everybody involved. It's outstanding.
Thank you. Very, very much appreciate that, and you're all just dying to hear what's coming next, so I guess we're done. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, before she goes, I just want to publicly state, really appreciate Heather's partnership from the website to the logo, to follow up with the callers and the bloggers and the travel writers and all that, and with, between her and Tricia, it's a dynamic twosome. I can't, I can't, I can't talk tonight, but I am, have been overly impressed with the work that they've done on a shoestring budget, so I just wanted to make sure they knew I was very appreciative.
Great. Yep. Excellent work. Thank you. All right, we have two more seats opened up. All right, folks, the next item on the agenda.
Oh, fucking Hollywood. She just said they have two seats. I love your enthusiasm.
So the next item on the agenda is Call to the Public, which I think the majority of the folks are here to see tonight. This portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a three-minute time period. So there are yellow forms in the back. If there's anybody that would like to address the council this evening, please fill out a yellow form. There's quite a few, so I'm gonna call you up in sets of three. The one thing I'm gonna ask is that you introduce yourself, let us know within which city you reside, and then you're free to address the council. I know a lot of you are here for the same issue. I hope it's been made clear to you that we can't engage in any kind of discussion with you this evening. We can't engage in discussion, you know, offline, outside of this meeting, but this is a public meeting where this particular item that you're here for just simply isn't on the agenda. So we can hear from you for three minutes, but we can't engage in conversation with you. It's very important that you direct your comments to the council, and these are comments only, not questions, and please don't ask questions or direct comments back to the audience. I would also ask that you please hold your applause. These meetings are normally very boring, and we like them that way, so if you could please hold, hold your applause, we would appreciate it. I know a lot of you are very emotionally tied to these agenda items, but, but again, it's just important for civility's sake that we please hold our applause. So again, I'll call you up in sets of three. We'll try to make sure we have enough time to hear everyone. We're certainly gonna hear everyone that's here this evening, but we're gonna try to do so in a manner that's as efficient as possible, okay? And I'm gonna read these off in the order within which I receive them. So first up, for Call, thank you, Call to the Public is Shell Luttrell, and if I mispronounce your name, I apologize. Is she in the chambers? Okay, great. And then after you, ma'am, will be Elektra Jung, and then after Ms. Jung will be Teresa Tally.
Can we come up together?
No, one at a time, please. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, councilmember. Recently, I went to an unpublished meeting that the, some city managers held, and it was regarding the annexation of my home area, state parkland and private property below the Sawmill Gardens area, Willow Tree. the Sawmill Gardens area, Willow Tree down below Safeway, if you're familiar with the area. I was told at that meeting that neither me nor my immediate neighbors were invited because the meeting didn't really affect us. The annexation had nothing to do with us, and that our lives would not change. But that's, that's not true. Our lives would change, and not for the better. I was also told that it really didn't matter what we thought anyways, because the decision had already been made, that everyone involved had already discussed it, and they were going to move forward. Just needed a stamp and they were ready to go. However, when I talked to other, or me or my neighbors talked to people from the State Parks Board or from city management, some of them had never even heard of this, didn't even know that this was on the plate. And that, and the ones who did know about it were told that everyone was in support. On that area, to the southwest side of the natural border of the river, there are seven properties which border the area in question. Five of us are absolutely opposed. In the general area, there are eleven properties, I think, and nine are absolutely opposed. I have much more to say about it, but this is a very big deal that has many, many consequences that most of us in our neighborhood are willing to address. So I'm begging you, please don't annex my home. Please, please.
Thank you.
My babies, my babies were born there. My placentas are buried on that land. My family has prayed and done ceremonial ways on that land. Please don't take my land, don't take my home. Let it be how it is, please.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next is Elektra Young.
My name's Elektra Young, and my husband Larry Strubar and I live right along the state parks land that the City of Cottonwood wishes to annex into the City of Cottonwood. I too did go to the meeting, hello Ron Corbin, last Monday, one week ago Monday. And it was not very informative at all, but it was made very clear that this has been a project ongoing for a year, not a year, year and a half to two years. The following morning, which we knew nothing about, although I had read about it in the 2025 general plan, many years ago, so this came like a tsunami wave to our neighborhood. Now, we are told that many property owners were not necessary at the meeting, really, because it was specific properties necessary to incorporate or to annex into the City of Cottonwood, so the right shape of the state parks land could be annexed into the City of Cottonwood. I could have that wrong, but that's where I think the agenda was heading. I did end up calling Tom Allen of the State Parks Board, who had not heard about this situation where we did not concur nor support the annexation of state parks land in our neighborhood into the City of Cottonwood. More than that, no one except one or two, there could be two landowners, out of nine or ten, in the immediate area support annexation. No others support it. And it's of the two large state park parcels. There's also other parcels that the city's interested. They didn't seem to have that much disagreement with annexing into the City of Cottonwood. But consider this, I, we all just heard a brilliant presentation of the growth of this city. It is immense, it is going full bore. Can we not have some historic, beautiful rural irrigated land areas that are alongside state parks land? We don't wish that land incorporated into the, or annexed, excuse me, into the City of Cottonwood for many reasons. Shell Lutrelle has her own reasons, my husband and I have my own, but many of the families and landowners in this area were unable to make the meeting, not even tonight's. And it's vital that this city council, if you would do so, place this on an agenda for the conversation between the landowners near that state parks land. And wow, when I think of the growth of this city, can we not have quiet areas? Do we even believe that the state parks land is going to remain as it is today? And will it ever? Of course not. We know it won't. But there's something else coming here, as a visitor's playground. I just want my last statement to be, this city, county, close to City of Cottonwood, is a home to many families throughout the City of Cottonwood, throughout the county areas. And these families are both city and county, and we all have to be a part of the growth of this city. And our, our voices need to be heard, and I thank you. I thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Next, we have Teresa Tally, and then after Teresa, we have Brad Logan and Sharon Zimmerman. And I'm going to rely on the folks in the audience and staff to make sure that those folks are queued up. I don't know if they're outside or over at the rec center, so. But next is Teresa Tally. And our deputy clerk reminded me, you'll hear an annoying buzzer when the three minutes is up, and that'll be your cue that it's time to, to wrap it up. Thank you.
Hi. I am here to speak on behalf of Jennifer Richards and the Cottonwood Studio in support of the alignment for reciprocity to be able to keep the studio open, to keep it running as it is a huge support to our community. It is a spiritual practice, it is a place that creates peace, contentment, it is a place to come and let go. So I am simply here to state my support to have right action taken in place on behalf of Jennifer Richards and the Cottonwood Yoga Studio, so that we may have a place to go and gather and practice for our peace of mind, for our spiritual practice. So I am just here to state that in support of the Cottonwood Studio.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Tally. And Brad Logan, you're next, followed by Sharon Zimmerman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Ron Corbin, Stephen, and council members. My assumption is that you all may not know what's going on with Ms. Richards' yoga studio. And I was the attorney who originally represented an LLC that she was a member of. And of course, as you may or may not know, LLCs have to have an attorney involved, although she's a very astute businesswoman, and she knows her way around the law a little bit as well. And she's chosen to represent herself in this matter now. And I'm assuming that the board members might not know what the fault is with the county record that she's asking to be corrected. And that it may be that your attorneys and the insurance company are trying to negotiate behind the scenes and just make a settlement and tell you that you have rules that they could wiggle out of liability, and you guys wouldn't have to be responsible for making things right for her and her, and the building and the services she brings to the community. And my hope is that today, with all these people here, to support her and her business and what she brings to the community, which is a beacon of light, and it would only make sense if you knew the whole story, that you would support what she's asking to be done, which is that the county, I mean, the city made a false record, and employees participated in that false record, and now she can't sell her business because of it, because it needs to be connected to a sewer line. She was told by the city records that it was connected to sewer line, and it's not. I mean, this is a really simple situation, and I would think that if all of you knew, you wouldn't let your attorneys say, "Well, you know, statute of limitations might get you out of this," or "You could do this over here," and kind of play chess with civil procedure, because you want to support the businesses in your community, I would assume. And so you would just say, "Hey, guys, we don't really care what those rules all say in the court. Our neighbor, our community member, our beacon of light in a business that's thriving in your community and, and is desired and wanted, and helps people through recovery, and helps people get grounded and connect spiritually, and connect to this wonderful community." I would think that you would just decide to make things right. And all these other people are here thinking that that's what's going to happen too, if they share, and, and instead of listening to what the attorneys might tell you, which is, "We really don't have to do this, and we can settle this on the side, and the insurance company's going to tell us what we ought to do." The council would just say, "The right thing to do is make the, is do what we said we did, which is connect her building to sewer." So that's what I'm here to say. And then you'll hear from Ms. Richards.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. All right, next is--
Mayor, could we have everyone repeat their name, say their name and where they're from?
Yes, thank you. Yep. Ms. Zimmerman, you're up next, followed by Jennifer Richards.
Hi, my name is Sharon Zimmerman, and I'm from Cornville. And I'm here to support Jen and her great business. I am a student there. I've always enjoyed it. I feel what's, it's an injustice to what's being done to her. And she's a kind, fair, wonderful person, and if somebody would please just listen to her, I mean, it really doesn't take a long time to realize that it's wrong. It's just wrong what's going on. And come on, if we want to improve Cottonwood, why would we want to take away a yoga studio where everybody has the opportunity to go ground themselves, as was said before? And I just, I just believe in her and it, and I am not one to go to these meetings. This is the first time I've spoken, I'm in my seventies, but nevertheless, please consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Richards, and then after Ms. Richards, we'll call up Kim Scott and Holly Shakalar. And again, if I'm butchering names, I do apologize. Good evening.
Thank you so much. I agree, it is nice to finally put faces to all of the names. My name is Jennifer Richards, I'm the owner of Cottonwood Hot Yoga. I am here tonight to inform you of the multiple, many dozens of crimes that have perpetu-- been perpetuated against me by the City of Cottonwood. A past administration has committed fraud and many other violations, and the current administration unfortunately has failed their duty to address these violations. Specifically, the current administration has not followed the fraud policy and has not followed Resolution Number 2279. I have thirty-four different violations of city ordinance, Cottonwood Municipal Code, Arizona Revised Statutes, International Building Codes, and International Plumbing Codes. With me tonight are many loving souls that are here to present to you the crimes that have been committed against me. There are thirty-four people here tonight that are just going to be presenting crimes and then more. The Attorney General's Rules for Open Meetings ask for you to be reasonable, and I believe that you are. And the Cottonwood Municipal Code, Section 2.08.120, Section F, Call to the Public, states that public remarks shall be limited to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the council. What I would like to propose, we'll be here for well over two hours if everybody speaks, and I believe the most reasonable use of our time would be for the thirty-four that are listed. For those people, they all want to give me their time, so rather than them speaking for two and a half hours, that I would be given fifteen, maybe twenty minutes maximum to consolidate everything that they're going to say, to share with you in a concise statement, so we're not here until nine o'clock at night. I know there's other important things on the agenda, the Bill of Rights that we're excited about as well. So my question is, would you give me the opportunity to consolidate those thirty-four, two hours of comments for fifteen minutes?
Ms. Richards, you reached out earlier with that question. I gave you the answer that every community member gets three minutes. This is just a call to the public. There's other opportunities for you to engage with council, and everyone here to engage with council. But in fairness for everyone that's here this evening, regardless of the item that they're here to address with council, it's, it's three minutes.
So with the call, unless additional time is granted by the council, you don't want to ask the council if they would prefer to have me do it for twenty minutes instead of listening to two hours of comments?
No. No, everyone gets three minutes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
You bet. All right, Ms. Scott, and then you'll be followed by Holly Shakalar.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kim Scott, and I'm a resident of Cornville. And I'd like to thank all of the city council members for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the International Building Code perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has allowed the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured in their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I am here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. Section 104.1 of the International Building Code states, "Building official is hereby authorized and directed to enforce the provisions of this code. Building official violated Section 1.104.2 applications and permits." The International Building Code reads, "The building official shall receive applications, review construction documents, and issue permits for the erection and alteration, demolition, and moving of buildings and structures. Inspect the premises for which such permits have been issued and enforce compliance with the provisions of this code." Section 104.2 clearly and specifically defines the scope of work the building official can issue permits for. This section does not give the building official authority to issue permits for work previously completed by an unknown contractor at an unknown date with no inspections or permits pulled. The City of Cottonwood's building official violated Section 104.2 when he accepted two permit applications and then issued two permits beyond his scope of authority, as specifically spelled out in the language of the code. The building official violated 104.2 applications and permits twice when he filled out sections of the permit application himself on both the application for 702 and the application for 704. The permit application for 704 South Main is filled out solely by the building official. Yes, that's right, the entire application was filled out and submitted by the building official himself, which is expressly illegal. On the permit for 702, the building official wrote, "Connect to sewer, was hooked to sewer at earlier date, unknown contractor, no permit was pulled. Roto-ruder, check the line, and it's all hooked up, three-quarter inch meter." That comment, written by the building official, Tom Hall, is then signed "Tom" and dated 3/8/07. Section 104.2 limits the powers of the building official to the receiving of applications and the review of construction documents. It does not grant the building official the authority to alter, change, or fill out the application for construction permit on behalf of the contractor or owner. Please look into this violation and remedy the injury it has caused immediately. I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Next, we have Holly Shakalar, followed by Matthew Tucirone.
Holly, Holly's next, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
Hi, my name is Holly Schokler, and I live in Sedona. I teach at Sedona Hot Yoga, and I'm also a student there. And it's provided an amazing support system. Jen has been amazing and really welcomed our family here to Sedona, so I'm really grateful. Thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of their International Building Code perpetrated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has allowed the public records, which the public reasonably replies upon, relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured in their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, and my family does as well, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I'm here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. So the building official violated the International Building Code, Section 104.4, inspection, which states, "The building official shall make all of the required inspections. Report of such inspection shall be in writing and be certified by a responsible officer of such approved agency or by the responsible individual. None of the required inspections were performed. There were no reports of such inspections in writing and certified as required by Section 104.4. If the building inspector would have adhered to this code, as he is bound by duty to do, he would have discovered the properties were serviced by a septic tank, not by city sewer. The public records would never have been falsified, and an important member and businesses of our city would never have been substantially injured. I request that the city council look into the violation of International Building Code, Section 104.4, and remedy the injury that this violation has caused immediately." Thank you all so much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Tucirone, and then following him, we'll have Josh Gray and Don Walter. Good evening.
Thank you so much. I'm one of the students at Sedona Hot Yoga, and Jen has provided such an amazing facility for everybody when it comes to spiritual growth and practice. My spiritual mentor teaches there, Mateo, he's the father of Holly's children as well, who's just up here speaking. This is causing not only to break up a business, but community and-- This is causing not only to break up a business, but community and family at this point, too. We're all a very good, tight-knit community. And what's detrimental is this is going to affect Sedona, too. Cottonwood and Sedona are too close together. We cannot have this happen. We have to support each other, being neighboring cities. So if this happens here in Cottonwood, the community in Sedona is affected as well. So I am a resident of Sedona, and I thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the International Building Code perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I am here today to ask the council to look and rectify this violation. Building official violated International Building Code, Section 104.7, Department Records, which reads, "The building official shall keep official records of applications received, permits and certificates issued, fees collected, reports of inspections and notices, and orders issued. Such records shall be retained in the official records for the period required for retention of public records. There are no reports in the department records of the required inspections for attaching 702 and 704 South Main Street to the city sewer. Had the required inspections been performed, it would have been discovered the properties are serviced by a private septic tank and not city sewer. We expect and demand of city officials to abide by the code that governs their required duty. When the law is broken and required codes are not followed, we kindly request city council personally look into the violations and remedy all injuries those violations caused the public." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Josh Gray, you're up next, then followed by Don Walter.
Hello, thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the International Building Code perpetrated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. My name's Josh Gray. I work SIP, Stay and Play here in Cottonwood, the Verde Valley. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of being shut down. I'm here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. Building official violated International Building Code, Section 105.3, application for permit, which reads, "To obtain a permit, the applicant shall first file an application, therefore, in writing on form furnished by the Department of Building Safety for that purpose. Such application shall identify and describe the work to be covered by the permit for which the application is made, describe the land on which the proposed work is to be done by legal description, street address, or similar description that will readily identify and definitely locate the proposed building or work. Indicate the use and occupancy for which the proposed work is intended. Be accompanied by construction documents and other information as required by Section 106.3. State valuation of proposed work. Be signed by the applicant or the applicant's authorized agent, and give other data and information as required by the building official. The permit applications were not completed to the code legally required, and as such should never have been accepted into the building or into by the building official." Here's a breakdown of what's missing, guys. City of Cottonwood Permit Application for 702 Main Street states at the top of the application, "Entire application must be completed," clarifying that all of the information requested is required. Here's the legally required information that's missing from Exhibit A1. Contractor phone number, contractor's sales tax number, contractor's current city business license number, property owner phone number, property owner's septic permit number, gross floor area, property owner mailing address, approved by, required dimensions, a lot. Plot plan is not drawn to scale as required. Building drain elevation, tap elevation, slope of pipe, the depth of the next upstream manhole cover rim is missing. City of Cottonwood Permit Application 704 Main Street states at the top of the application, "Entire application must be completed," clarifying that all of the information requested is critical and required. Here's the legally required information that is missing from Exhibit A3. Contractor phone number, contractor license, Arizona state tax ID number, current city business license number, property owner phone number, septic permit number, gross floor area, no required applicant's signature, no date approved by his blank, no plot plan at all, no construction drawings, no dimensions, no size and type of pipe, no total length of run, no building drain elevation, no tap elevation, no slope of pipe, the list goes on. I request the city council look into the violation of International Building Code, Section 105.3, and remedy this injury. This violation is caused immediately. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Appreciate it. Up next is Don Walter, followed by Harley Gittleman, and then Linda Demita will be third.
Hi, my name is Don Walter, and I live in Cornville. And I'd like to thank you so much for taking the time to listen to each of us that has shown up here tonight to support Jen, and really just to support what's right. We all want to just make sure wrongs are righted. And I'd like to thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the International Building Code perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I am here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. Building official violated International Building Code, Section 105.3.1, action on application, which reads, "The building official shall examine or cause to be examined applications for permits and amendments thereto within a reasonable time after filing. If the application of construction documents do not conform to the requirements of pertinent laws, the code official shall reject such application in writing stating the reasons therefore. The code official was compelled by Code 105.3.1 to reject these application for construction permits because they did not conform to the requirements of the International Building Code. I request the city council look into the violation of International Building Code, Section 105.3.1, and remedy the injury this violation has caused immediately. Thank you so much for hearing us today."
Thank you. All right, Harley Gittleman, and then Linda Demita will follow, and after that, Lena Lortz sign.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Harley Gittleman. I'm a resident of Sedona. Both Cottonwood and Sedona serve as yoga locales for me, and I've been doing this for about 10 years now. And it is a place where strong community presence is felt every time I go, and it's a wonderful place to relax and invigorate at the same time. And it would be a travesty to have this place be affected in the way that it's being affected now. Thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present violation of the International Building Code perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I'm here to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. Building official violated International Building Code, Section 106.1.1, information on construction documents, which read, "Construction documents shall be dimensioned and drawn upon suitable material. Construction documents shall be of sufficient clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and show in detail that it will be conformed to the provisions of this code and relevant laws, ordinances, rules, and regulations. Construction documents are missing entirely for the permit application for 704, and the construction documents for 702 are missing much of the required information. Therefore, the permits should have been rejected. I request the city council look into the violation of the International Building Code, Section 106.1.1, and remedy the injury this violation has caused immediately. We should be able to trust our government to not break the law, and we certainly should be able to trust our government to remedy the injuries caused if they do break the law. Thank you."
Thank you, sir. Linda Demita, and then Lena Lortz sign, and following that, this one has no name on it, Patricia Kryeski. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi there, thanks for being here and listening to all of us. We do appreciate your positions, and I want to just say before I start that the people who attend Hot Yoga vary in age. They're men and women. They come from all walks of life. It's not just a certain type of person that goes there, and I just wanted to stress that. I've been attending yoga with Jen since she started, so 12 years. I left Sedona last year. I live in Cottonwood now. I left Sedona last year. A lot of stuff happened for a lot of people. And I just want to say that the hardest thing for me to leave next to my daughter and my friends was my yoga studio. And coming back in December, she knows it's one of the best things that's happened to me in this town. And Sedona and Cottonwood are connected, and you folks have an opportunity to do right and to raise the bar, not only in Cottonwood, but for this entire Verde Valley. And I implore you to really take heed to what everyone is saying here today, because you guys have the opportunity to really make a difference for all of us. Thank you again, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the International Building Code perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I and hundreds rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down, not to mention all of the people who visit, thousands of people who have come through her place over the years. I am here today to ask this council to look into this and rectify this violation. Building official violated International Building Code, Section 106.2, site plan, which reads, "The construction documents submitted with the application for permit shall be accompanied by a site plan showing to scale the size and location of new construction and existing structures on site, distances from lot lines, the established street grades, and the proposed finished grades, and as applicable, flood hazard areas, floodways, and design flood elevations, and it shall be drawn in accordance with an accurate boundary line survey." A site plan is missing entirely from the application for 704, and the site plan for 702 does not meet the requirements of 106.2. Therefore, the permit should have legally been rejected. As a direct result of the permit not being rejected, but rather accepted, an important member of our community was substantially injured, and I and a business that I rely upon, and like I said, not just me, but hundreds of people, whose lives have been changed by her business and what she does and how she holds herself individually. I got a little digressed there, sorry. I rely upon, it's in jeopardy of closing down. That will really affect a lot of people, not just her family. I respectfully request, truly respectfully request, that the council look into the violation of IBC, Section 106.2, and remedy the injury it has caused immediately, please. We as citizens should be able to rely upon you for these records and have approved and placed on record by building officials improperly. The misuse of power is not only a threat to Jennifer, but it really affects all of us. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lena Lortz sign. Again, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing it correctly, followed by Patricia Kryeski, and then Chris Powell. Evening.
Hello, good evening. My name is Lena Lortz, and I live in Sedona, and I partake in Sedona Hot Yoga here in Cottonwood, and as well as in Sedona. I am a psychotherapist that's acutely aware of the damage, psychological damage and suffering that has occurred in the last year and a half due to COVID. I've seen the suffering in the adult population, teenage population, and child population. And I can also say that there is an immense amount of resources, healing, body-mind balance that comes from having a community, having a place to go every day, working with the body, breathing, and everything else that takes place at Sedona Hot Yoga, which is not only yoga. So I'm emphasizing the importance of having community, places, safe places, where there is no drugs and alcohol, where we can partake in healthy ways of healing body, mind, and soul. Thank you for taking this time, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the International Building Code perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies on, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I'm here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. The building official violated International Building Code, Section 106.3, the examination of the documents, which reads, "The building official shall examine or cause to be examined by accompanying construction documents, and shall ascertain by such examinations whether the construction indicated and described is in accordance with the requirements of this code and other pertinent laws or ordinances. The accompanying documents and lack thereof were not in accordance with the requirements of this code and other pertinent laws and ordinances, and as such should have been rejected. The building official's gross negligence in accepting and approving two construction permits that do not conform to the requirements of this code has caused substantial injury to Jennifer Richards and threatens her business, which I rely upon. I respectfully request council to look into the violations of IBC, Section 106.3, and remedy the injury it has caused immediately. How can we, the public, trust our government if the government is able to break the law without reproach? This is very important. How can the current administration sit by and do nothing in the face of such disregard for the law that has caused such severe and substantial injury to its own citizens? We are present, we are awake, we are aware, we are watching. I ask you to do the right thing. Thank you."
Thank you, ma'am. Patricia Kryeski, you're up next, followed by Chris Powell, and then Mark Cohn. Good evening.
Hi there. My name is Patricia Kryeski, and I'm a resident of Cottonwood. I am also a client of Cottonwood Hot Yoga, as well as Sedona Hot Yoga. In my short tenure in Cottonwood, I came from the state of California, where yoga studios are continued to be closed down to this very day. What yoga has offered to me is a lot about holistic health and basically the offerings to the community, and these businesses are very important to any community that they're in, especially in light of other places not having this available to them. So I would like to just present to you, there's a lot of support behind this. I thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the Cottonwood Sewer Policy perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I am here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. Section 13.12.020 of the city sewer policy stated, quote, "The city council shall make and enforce such rules and regulations as may be deemed necessary for the safe, economical, and efficient management and protection of the city's sewer system for the construction and use of the sewers and connections to the sewer system," end quote. Since the city council is charged with enforcing the rules and regulations in regards to connections to the sewage system, we ask the city council, review the following violations of city sewer policy and assist in remedying the resulting harm that has been caused. The building official acted on behalf of the city, violated Section 13.12.032 of the city sewer policy, which reads, quote, "Permits required. No person shall uncover, make any connections with or opening into, use, alter, or disturb any public sewer or appurtenance thereof without first obtaining a written permit from the city of Cottonwood," end quote. There are no le- There are no legally required permits on record for connecting 702 and 704 South Main Street to City Sewer. The building official would have known a permit for sewer connection was necessary for these buildings to have been previously connected to sewer. The absence of any legally required permits on record for these buildings should have compelled the building official to reject the application for a permit for sewer connection that suggested the sewer connection had been previously completed. Lastly, I respectfully request this council look into the violation of the City Sewer Policy and remedy the injury caused by the city for not following this code. I thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kryeski. Chris Powell, you're up next, followed by Mark Cohn and Linia Johnson. Evening.
Hello, I'm Christopher Powell, and I'm a resident of Cornville, and I'm here to support Jennifer and her yoga studio. I'm a chiropractor and yoga teacher and a student, and it's not just a spiritual practice, it's really important for overall health and immune function during these times. So I just want to say thank you, members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a violation of the Cottonwood Sewer Policy perpetrated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This violation has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of this falsification, the public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured, and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. And I'm here today to ask the council to look into the violation. The building official acting on behalf of the city violated the City Sewer Policy Application for Sewer Taps, which reads, "Each person making application for a sewer tap shall present a valid plumbing permit issued by the city building official or his authorized representative to the wastewater department as a prerequisite for the approval of the requested sewer tap. There was never an application for a sewer tap made. In order for the building official to believe that 702 and 704 South Main Street were previously connected to City Sewer, there would have needed to have been an application for a sewer tap made. Since no application were ever made, there were no legal grounds for the building official to believe that the two properties could have ever been previously connected to City Sewer. You know, we expect that our government officials and employees to use the utmost care and discernment when entering documents into the public record, that the public will undoubtedly be relying upon to make large investments and create growth in this city. I respectfully request the council look into the violations of the City Sewer Policy and remedy all injuries these violations have caused. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Mr. Powell. All right, folks, we're about halfway through here. As a reminder to people that have just come in, please turn off your phones. You guys are all doing a great job, being very respectful. We appreciate it very much. Like I said, we're about halfway through, so there's bathrooms across the street at the public restroom, and if Mr. Lynn Mendel, who is last, would like to go out and grab a bite to eat, you probably have plenty of time, so. Sir, you are free to come forward and address the council.
I want to read that top part, let's say it one at a time, easy.
Okay. Well, first off, my name is Mark Cohn. I'm a resident of Sedona. I'm a member of Jennifer's Hot Yoga there, and it is a spiritual practice, as you've heard everybody saying. And again, she asked me to read this, so I'm going to read my version of it, but I want to thank everybody and say God bless you for being here and all of your service that you do for our community. Again, I truly do believe that everybody, especially during this great COVID thing, is doing a great job, so just want to say that. Again, my grandmother used to say something, and she would say, "Follow your heart, it knows the way." And I'm truly just asking you just to follow your heart, find out what in your heart says is the right thing, and just do it. And I'm going to skip that first part, it just says, "The building official violated the city sewer policy." The title, the section titled, "City Approved Design: Quality, Location, Size, and Construction of Sewer Service," which reads, quote, "The design, location, quality, method of connection, and size of all sewer taps shall be subject to the approval of the city engineer," end quote. There are no records of the design, location, quantity, method of connection, or size of the service for 702 or 704 South Main Street that was approved by the city engineer. This, again, should have been given to the city official, Tom Hall, and caused to reject the notion that the buildings were indeed previously connected to the sewer. We, as citizens, must be able to rely upon the building official to be of sound mind and judgment, and to exercise that judgment in this official capacity. Clearly, the building was officially, was official, was grossly negligent in his approval of two unlawful permits that falsely altered the public record, and as such, I respectfully request the council to investigate the violations of the Cottonwood Sewer Policy and remedy the injuries caused by the main violations of that policy. Our city must rid itself, or at least look into itself, of all the corruption and the fraud in order to secure a bright and prosperous future, but again, just do the right thing. You guys know what you're doing here. God bless you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Linia Johnson is up next, followed by Tiffany Stroh, and after Tiffany, we have Christina Galla. Evening.
Hi, my name is Linia Johnson, and I'm a resident of Cottonwood. I moved here a little over a year ago. I'm a student in Jen Studios, and I've been doing hot yoga for over seven years now. I attend both studios, the one in Sedona and the one here, and I rely upon both of them to be open, because my membership extends to both of the studios. During COVID, it was very important to me to be able to get to hot yoga. The studio is very important to me, and not just me, but people in this community and also in Sedona. I'll skip the first part. So it says, "The building official acting on behalf of the city violated the City Sewer Policy. Records to be kept by Water Department," which read, "The wastewater department shall keep a record of all sewer taps made, the purpose for which they are to be used, together with the name of the property owner, his agent, or representative. The wastewater department has no records of the sewer taps being made, the purpose for which it was to be used, and the name of the property owner. The only record the city has is a routine assessment survey, which showed the existence of two sewer taps that were factory-made. Of course, they would not have any other records, because the buildings are on private septic tank and not tied into City Sewer. The building official should have looked into the tap records before ever approving an unlawful permit that falsely altered public record. I respectfully request the council to look into the violations of the City Sewer Policy and remedy the injury it has caused immediately, and to restore public trust. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Tiffany Stroh, followed by Christina Galla, and then Carol Brown. Good evening.
Tiffany Stroh, I am a resident of Jerome. I too am a yoga teacher, but you don't know that. I'm brand-new to her community, and it's been very welcoming, so I will read this in support of Jennifer. Building official acting on behalf of the city violated the Cottonwood City Sewer Policy Section 13.12.68, Sanitary Sewers, Design, Construction, and Inspection, which reads, "The city shall have the authority to approve the design, issue permits, and conduct inspections for facilities that are to be connected to the city's sanitary sewer system. B, the design and construction of all sanitary sewers under the jurisdiction to the City of Cottonwood must conform to the standard sewer design and construction specifications as adopted by the city from time to time in the Arizona State Health Services Bulletin Number 11. C, further, all sewers to be attached directly or indirectly to a city sewer shall be inspected by personnel of the city during construction of a city sewer. No alteration of the city's facility shall commence until an inspector is present. No wastewater shall be discharged into any sewage facility prior to obtaining inspections and approval of sewage construction by the city. D, following satisfactory completion of construction, the city will issue a construction inspection certificate upon request. There are no approval designs, permits, or inspections or inspection certificates on record for 702 and 704 South Main Street, because these buildings were never connected to City Sewer. The absence of these required procedures, documents, and records should have made it very clear to the building official the sewer status of these buildings. He should have never blindly accepted Roderter's assertion that these buildings were previously tied to the city sewer at an earlier date by an unknown contractor. I respectfully request the council to look at the sewer policy violation and further remedy the injury this violation has caused. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Christina Galla, and then Carol Brown, followed by Jacqueline Harrington. Good evening.
Thank you, city council, for being here and listening. Cottonwood Hot Yoga has not only been a respite for me, but it has literally saved my life. I would not be alive today if the studio wasn't there for me. The City of Cottonwood, by way of its employee, Tom Hall, is guilty of violating Arizona Revised Statute Section 132704 by committing unsworn falsification by making a statement he believed to be false in regard to a material issue to a public servant in connection with an application for a benefit. City of Cottonwood is guilty of unsworn falsification, as Tom himself filled out the permit for 704 South Main Street and presented it to himself. Tom was compelled to unequivocally reject the statement he wrote on said application that the property was tied into City Sewer by the overwhelming lack of all the required permits and inspection on record that would be necessary to reasonably indicate as such. As a direct result of the city committing unsworn falsification, Jennifer Richards, along with the two other owners of the properties, relied upon false public documents in their decision to buy the property and consequently sustained substantial injury. This is a very serious criminal offense. I respectfully request the council investigate or cause to be investigated this serious violation of unsworn falsification. How can we trust a government who allows unchecked, unsworn falsification to ruin property, businesses, and equity? Please remedy the injury this violation has caused Jennifer Richards immediately and restore truth in our local government.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Carol Brown is next, followed by Jacqueline Harrington, and then Noreen Peter. Evening.
My name is Carol Brown, and I am a resident of Cottonwood. I have been a member of Hot Yoga in Cottonwood and Sedona for five years, and it also has saved my life, and it is my avenue to mental, spiritual, and physical health on a daily basis. Thank you, city council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a crime perpetuated by the city employee while working in their official capacity. The City of Cottonwood, by way of its employee, is guilty of violating Arizona Revised Statute Criminal Code Section 132407. When Tom Hall, then-building official, tampered with a public record, quote, "A person commits tampering with a public record if the intent to defraud or deceive such a person knowingly records, registers, or files, or offers for recordation, registration, or filing in a governmental office or agency a written statement which has been falsely made, completed or altered, or in which false entry has been made, or which contains a false statement or false information," end quote. There is no other purpose for the knowingly false information in the applications for construction permit than to deceive current or future owners and tenants of the property who would directly rely on such information. Building official acted on behalf of the city, completed and offered for recording two building permits containing knowingly false statements and false information. The current owners of property reasonably relied upon the public records the city tampered with, as a result, have sustained substantial injury. I respectfully request the council investigate or cause to be investigated the crimes perpetuated at 702 and 704 South Main Street, and remedy all injury these criminal actions have caused. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Jacqueline Harrington, you're up next, followed by Noreen Peter, and then Melanie Dugan. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. First off, thank you so much for diligently and patiently listening to all of us, and I know that you hear your community crying out to be heard, so thank you for that. I personally discovered Jen's studio four years ago, and in that time, it has become more than my therapy, more than my religious service. It supports my livelihood, it allows me to offer services to the community. There's boarding schools, there's battered women and children shelters, there's multiple charities and community members in need that we support, and actually Jen many times offers those services at no profit, just to hold a space of healing for those who need it. So we appreciate you knowing and understanding that and supporting this space. The prepared statement I have for you is, "The City of Cottonwood, by way of its employee, Tom Hall, is guilty of violating Arizona Revised Statute Section 39-161. When Tom Hall presented a false instrument for filing, this statute states, 'A person who acknowledges, certifies, notarizes, procures, or offers to be filed, registered, or recorded in a public office in this state an instrument he knows to be false or forged, which if genuine, could be filed, registered, or recorded under any law of the state or United States, or in compliance with established procedures, is guilty of a Class VI felony. The building official procured and offered to be filed an application for building permit with knowingly false information. There is no way the building official could reasonably believe that this statement on the permit, the statements on the permit application were true. He knew, or should have known, by the overwhelming preponderance of evidence to the contrary, that his statements could not possibly be true or accurate. The building owners at 702 and 704 South Main Street reasonably relied on the false instruments the city put into public record, and as a direct result, were substantially injured. I respectfully request that the council investigate or cause to be investigated the crimes stated, and remedy all injury caused thereby, and ensure that the laws and ordinance that they represent be equally applied." Thank you so much.
Thank you. Noreen Peter, you're up next, and then Melanie Dugan, followed by Juanita Marlet. Good evening.
Hi, bear with me, I'm not great at public speaking, but my name is Noreen Peter, and I live here in Cottonwood. And I have to tell you that it's not just that I support hot yoga, but I find it kind of like scary that somebody could buy a piece of property that they think is hooked up to City Sewer, and then all of a sudden it's not. That just blows my mind that that could happen. So I'm here to support Jen and our hot yoga class. So Arizona Revised Statute 13-107 states that a felony involving falsification of public records may be commenced at any time. We, the people, are accusing the city of falsification of public records. ARS 13.201 states that minimum requirement for criminal liability is the performance by a person of conduct which includes a voluntary act or admission to perform a duty imposed by law which the person is physically capable of performing. The building official failed to perform the duty imposed on him by the laws, codes, and ordinance governing his duties. ARS 13.204 states that ignorance or mistaken belief as a matter of fact or a matter of law does not relieve a person of criminal liability and responsibility. ARS 13.203 states that conduct is the cause of a result when both the following exist, but for the conduct, the result in question would not have occurred, and the relationship between the conduct and the result satisfy any additional causal requirements imposed by the statute defining the offense. Had it not been for the city's criminal actions, the public record would not have been falsified. The owners of- The owners of 702 and 704 South Main Street would have not reasonably relied upon the false information, and they would have been spared the substantial injury they now suffer. I respectfully ask the council to look into the criminal violations of the City of Cottonwood and remedy the injury that it has caused immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peter. Melanie Dugan, you're next, and then Juanita Marlet, followed by Tom Gagowski.
Thank you for your time. My name is Melanie Dugan, I reside in Cornville. I'm a stay-at-home mom with four kids under the age of seven, which is why I rely heavily on Jennifer's business for my well-being. The City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, violated the International Plumbing Code, Section 104.3, Applications and Permits, which states, "The code official shall receive applications and issue permits for the installation and alteration of plumbing, inspect the premises for which such permits have been issued, and enforce compliance with the provisions of this code. The code official was not authorized to accept a permit for work already completed, and the code official failed to inspect the premises for which he issued the permits. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galla. Juanita Marlet, you're next, followed by Tom Gagowski, and then Alice Bronstein.
Hi there. Thank you for letting us speak today. My name is Juanita Marlet, I'm a resident here in Cottonwood. And someone mentioned that yoga participants come in all sizes and shapes and ages. Anyway, I'm here to just present the Section 104.4, following the last one. "The code official shall bake all required inspections or shall accept reports of inspections by approved agencies or individuals." Well, apparently, the code official made none of the required inspections as outlined in the City of Cottonwood Sewer Policy, International Building Code, and International Plumbing Code for connection to city sewer for 702 and 704 South Main Street. So, I respectfully request the council to look into this matter, and hopefully, this can be resolved, and everyone can move along. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Marlet. Tom Gagowski, you're up next, sir, and then Alice Bronstein, followed by Walker Marshall.
My name is Tom Gagowski, and I am a resident of Yabapai County, but some days, I think I'm a resident here because I spend more time in your stores and your shops than I do anywhere else. So, I have, like everyone else, a list. I'm number 23. Of all of the things that I've done in my life, which include being a disabled Vietnam vet, and a licensed engineer, and still licensed to practice real estate law in three states, thousands of transactions, quite a number of which are commercial real estate transactions, I can't begin to tell you how many times I have encountered falsified permit things. But maybe the most important thing I want to bring to your attention today is that I was formerly licensed to practice law. And regardless of what this guy, Tom Hall, did, you guys, this is your watch, and you need to take care of this. And I'll put this right on you, because I had to sit here and listen to some lady talk about what a great job she's doing promoting your city. Now, you'd have to have somebody with a little bit of experience to figure out how you draw the line between that and annexing land on the end of the city here with the view to building lots of really expensive real estate, because Arizona's a nice place to live, that's why I'm here, and how somebody could just bring up a question of quality of life here by making a big issue out of the fact that people can't trust the records here in Cottonwood. If you have any idea what that would do to the developers that might be thinking of building there, I don't think you have a clue. Now, there's some other things that I looked at here which would stand out really, really I know someplace in your city government, you, Mr. Mayor, you have a fund, you can access this fund, you don't even need anybody's permission, probably wouldn't do it without asking them. My suggestion to you is you settle this matter, and you do it in a way that gets this lady to sign a non-disclosure agreement, because if she takes this to the press, that $43,000, that $14 million worth of advertising in conjunction with the state of Arizona, you know how you're going to embarrass the state of Arizona if it comes out that people can't trust your codes and your records? What is that going to do to the, what is that going to do to the image of this city that you're working so hard to build? It's really, as I sat here all evening, I'm having difficulty understanding why it is you're all here and why you haven't settled this matter. It can't cost that much. You could get somebody to sign a non-disclosure agreement, and everything goes away instead of wasting everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is Ms. Alice Bronstein, Walker Marshall, and then Thomas Ray. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Elise Bronstein, and I live in Sedona, and I'm a member of Cottonwood and Sedona Hot Yoga. I practice six days a week. It's essential for emotional, mental, and physical health. The City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, violated the International Plumbing Code, Section 104, 105.3, required testing. Quote, "Whenever there is insufficient evidence of compliance with the provisions of this code, or evidence that a material or method does not conform to the requirements of this code, or in order to substantiate claims for alternative materials or methods, the code official shall have the authority to require tests as evidence of compliance," end quote. None of the required permits, permits, inspections, or records existed for 702 and 704 South Main Street to suggest it would be connected to the city sewer. In light of the insufficient evidence that there was compliance with this code, the code official should have compelled to require testing to substantiate Roto-Rooter's claims. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused. This is really important to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Walker Marshall, and then Thomas Ray, followed by Anna Stid. Hello.
Hi, my name is Walker Marshall, and I live in Sedona, but I practice yoga here at the Cottonwood Studio, as well as the Sedona Studio. And Jen is really a godsend for all of us. And just to let you know, there's probably 35 of us who will speak tonight, but there are hundreds and hundreds of people who will come to her aid when she calls. So, this is just a small sampling of the people who support her, and I really recommend that you do whatever you can to help her get through the situation so that it can be remedied as quickly as possible. And I will share, "Thank you, City Council members, for giving me the opportunity to publicly present a crime perpetuated by a city employee while working in their official capacity. This crime has caused the public records, which the public reasonably relies upon, to be falsified. Because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured, and their livelihood and business, which I rely upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I am here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this crime. The City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, ignored Section 106.1 of the International Plumbing Code, titled, 'When Required, Any Owner, Authorized Agent, or Contractor Who Desires to Construct, Enlarge, Alter, Repair, Move, Demolish, or Change the Occupancy of a Building or Structure, or to Erect, Install, Enlarge, Alter, Repair, Remove, Convert, or Replace Any Plumbing System, the Installation of Which Is Regulated by This Code, or to Cause Any Such Work to Be Done, shall first make application to the code official and obtain the required permit for the work.'" In order for the code official to legitimately believe that 702 and 704 South Main Street Cottonwood were previously tied into the city sewer, there would have had to have been permits on record proving and permitting such work as required by law. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused. Also, just want to say, you may not be aware, but in Sedona, when COVID shut down all the yoga studios temporarily, she's the only one that survived, okay? All the others are gone, and it is a mainstay for health, as you've heard from many people, mental health, physical health, spiritual health. It is a foundation in this community, as well as the Sedona community. I'm not sure how the impact was with the other studios of Cottonwood, but it was devastating for the Sedona yoga studios, and Jen was able to maintain her, both of her businesses in the midst of that economic crisis. So, she is a fortress of strength and power, and I request respectfully that you do what you can to make right this wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Ray, you're up next. Anna Stid, you'll follow, and then Janine Miller. Evening.
Thank you for listening to us. My name is Thomas Ray. I'm a resident of Sedona, grew up in Prescott, I'm an Air Force veteran, disabled veteran. I rely on the yoga studios for my health. I've experienced healing in the studios. I'm going to read the violations here. "The City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, violated the International Plumbing Code, Section 106, Application for Permit. Quote, 'Each application for a permit with the required fee shall be filed with the code official on a form furnished for that purpose, and shall contain a general description of the proposed work and its location. The application shall be signed by the owner or an authorized agent. The permit application shall indicate the proposed occupancy of all parts of the building and of that portion of the site or lot, if any, not covered by the building or structure, and shall contain such other information required by the code official,' end quote. As outlined above in Section E of the International Building Code violations, there is much of the required information, including the required signature, missing from the permit application submitted by Michael White of Roto-Rooter. The code official was compelled by this code to reject the incomplete applications. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused." Thanks, y'all.
Thank you, sir. Anna Stid, you're up next, followed by Janine Miller, and then Justin Onofriadi.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Anna Stid. I'm a chiropractor and a resident here in Cottonwood. I'm here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this violation. The City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, the International Plumbing Code, Section 106.5, Permit Issuance, quote, "The application, construction documents, and other data filed by the, by an applicant for a permit shall be reviewed by the code official. If the code official finds that the proposed work conforms to the requirements of this code and all laws and ordinances applicable thereto, a permit shall be issued to the applicant," unquote. Again, this code official was compelled to reject the applications submitted by Michael White of Roto-Rooter, as they did not conform to the requirements of this code and all laws and ordinances applicable thereto, as outlined in this complaint. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused. Thank you.
Thank you. Janine Miller, you're up next. Justin Onofriadi, and then Adam Brown.
Thank you. My name is Janine Miller. I'm a resident of Sedona for the past 16 years. I'm here for three reasons. One, because this can happen to any of us. Two, I'm supporting Jennifer, because Jennifer is such a support to our community, both in Sedona, Cottonwood, obviously, the Verde Valley. I think it's kind of ironic that this, us speaking is sandwiched between the marketing for the city and the city adopting the Bill of Rights as a sanctuary. There's no coincidences. What I would like to say is that I recently, in the past year, with COVID happening, have found out that I am in dire need, health-wise, of Jennifer's services. I don't want to see her businesses closed for any reason. I don't want to see her suffer any more injury for any reason. And I do believe that this council has the ability to rectify the situation, and that I only found out about this situation today. I'm coming here in good faith, I'm letting you know how I feel, and I would like you to know that the City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, violated the International Plumbing Code, Section 106.5.1, Approved Construction Documents. When the code official issues the permit where the construction documents are required, the construction documents shall be endorsed in writing and stamped "approved." There is no required approved stamp on the incomplete construction documents for 702, and there are no required construction documents at all for 704. I believe that's for the addresses. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Justin Onofriadi, and you'll be followed by Adam Brown, and then Laura Bramblett.
Good evening. Are we at evening yet? Yeah? Okay. My name is Justin. I've moved here from the east side. I've been blessed to meet Jen and this tremendously huge family. She accepted me through my circumstances with no judgment, and I trusted in her heart when she hired me. I was facing a moment in my life where I may have been on the streets, and I was blessed with a job. It's the longest I've been sober since moving, which was pretty important for me through my meditation and my awareness and doing the best that I can to bring my truth to the community. I trust in her that the truth that she brings today is valid, and that the City of Cottonwood, through its employee, there's a violation against the International Plumbing Code, Section 107.1, and this involves requiring inspections and testing. It states that the code is official upon notification from the permit holder on the permit holder's agent that they shall make the following inspections and such other inspections as necessary. The code official did not perform a single test or inspection required. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code. This violation and fully remedy the injury this violation has caused. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Adam Brown, you're next, and then Laura Bramblett, followed by Anna Kristnall. Hello. Evening.
Thank you, council. My name's Adam. I grew up here in the valley, and I'm a resident here now. I've been using Jen's studios here in Sedona for about three years. I believe they're a wonderful asset to the Verde Valley. It'd be terrible to lose her business. I'm here to present another violation against her there. The City of Cottonwood, through its employee, the code official, violated the International Plumbing Code, Section 108.1, Unlawful Acts. It shall be unlawful for any person, firm, or corporation to erect, construct, alter, repair, remove, demolish, or utilize any plumbing system, or cause the same to be done in conflict with or in violation of any of the provisions of this code. By violating and ignoring the governing codes, ordinances, and laws, the code official allowed two plumbing systems to be utilized that are in violation of this code. I respectfully request the council to look into this International Plumbing Code violation and fully remedy the injury it's caused.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, Laura Bramblett, and then we have Anna Kristnall, and followed by Emily Moran. Evening.
Hello. My name is Laura Bramblett, and I'm a resident of Cottonwood, as well as a student of Jen's hot yoga studio. Slightly flabbergasted that this has happened in the first place, and we just ask that you right the wrongs that have happened. And so, this administration has failed to follow the required procedures outlined in the City of Cottonwood's fraud policy. The fraud policy states that the actions constituting fraud are alterations of a document. The building official falsely altered a public document and filled out a second permit entirely on his own with false and fraudulent statements. Intentional misrepresentation of information on the documents. The building official knew the laws that he was bound to enforce and intentionally chose not to. In doing so, he intentionally misinterpreted critical information on two public documents. Authorizing or receiving payments for services not performed. The building official authorized and received two payments of $225 for approval of two permit applications. He failed to perform the required inspections in order to- in order to legally obtain those fees. Knowing recklessly, intentionally, or intentionally having inaccuracies in the maintenance of the books and records, the building official was recklessly and grossly negligent in the maintenance of the official records for 702 and 704 on South Main Street. Any apparent violation of federal, state, or local law related to dishonest activities. We have provided all the additional laws that were broken related to this dishonest activity. The city fraud policy specifically outlines the management responsibility, administration service responsibility, the city manager's responsibility, the risk manager's responsibilities, the city attorney's responsibilities, and more. Most of the required procedures and actions that are obligations of the current administration have been, to this point, ignored or deliberately not followed. We ask respectfully the council to look into the city fraud policy and so far the unwillingness and inaction of the current administration. Please ensure that the fraud policy is upheld to all of those who have failed in their duty to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anna Kristnall, you're up next. Emily Morin will follow you, and then Caitlin Hies is next. Thank you.
Hi there. I'm Anna Kristnall. I'm actually a new resident of Sedona. I was, I lived in New York City at the time of the pandemic, and I ended up on a road trip. And when I came through and I found Jen and her studio, this became a new home almost immediately. So I've seen a lot of yoga studios, and this is something really special that Jen has created. And it's taken on a life of its own, which I'm sure you've noticed by seeing the community that's come through here. We had double the amount of people outside that we had to turn away just because Jen was being respectful and taking less time than was offered. So I'll continue. So because of the falsification of public record by a city employee, a private citizen was substantially injured and their livelihood and business, which I reply upon, is in jeopardy of shutting down. I am here today to ask the council to look into and rectify this crime. The current administration has failed to follow the required procedures outlined in Cottonwood Municipal Code 8.44, adopted by Reference Resolution Number 2279, Ordinance 503, Section 1, which states, "When the city becomes aware of an alleged violation of this code, either through a complaint or from the agency or city officials who become aware of possible violations through the normal course of their duties, the following procedure will not be used to address said violations. One, inspection. If the violation is considered an immediate threat to public health, safety, or general welfare, as a hazardous condition, the city will respond with an immediate inspection of the property as authorized by federal, state, and local law, but no inspection was ever performed. Two, notification letter. Three, notice of violation. Four, follow-up inspection. Five, criminal complaint. Six, abatement. The Office of the Administrative Hearing Officer is authorized to hear, decide, and resolve complaints from designated city officers alleging violations of the following sections of Cottonwood Municipal Code. Listed here is Title 15, Buildings and Construction. Title 15 includes all international building codes and all international plumbing codes. The city manager, the code enforcement officer, the city attorney, and the current building officials are specifically listed as the city officers authorized to file complaints with the Office of the Administrative Hearing Officer. Jennifer Richards was notified, has notified every single one of these officers of the code violation. On April 20th, 2021, Jennifer hand-delivered an official complaint outlining 24 code violations to code enforcement. She was, she was also really busy, by the way. She was then told there is nothing code enforcement can do because the complaint is against the city and they cannot enforce actions against themselves. This is an outrage. 8.44.270 states that "Any violation of the provisions of the code shall constitute a civil offense, and any person who is found responsible for such offense by liable to pay civil sanction. The amount listed is $2,500 for each violation for each day it continues." If we apply the same standards and consequences to the city for 24 code violations allowed to remain, point being $2,580,000. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Emily Morin, you're up next, followed by Caitlin Hies, and then Riley Penkowitz.
Hello. My name is Emily Morin, and I'm currently a resident in Sedona, but I've been in the area since 2017 with my family. My husband and I are both teachers in town, and we've taught, actually looking around some of your children and grandchildren in the area in Cottonwood and Sedona. And as all of you guys probably are aware, it's been a really rough year for our children in the community. And no one's really mentioned the children much, but what happens in this community is our adults need to show up for the kids. And when we have adults that are healthy physically and spiritually and mentally, they can show up for the kids. And that's what we needed this year during the pandemic in the schools. And Jen's studio stayed open. I have five parents at my school alone that I'm currently working at that work at her studio. I have multiple parents that attend the studio, and these kids are having adults showing up for them when they see all around them the world crumbling. So besides that, I'm going to speak to you guys about one of the codes. This one looks like it's to the city manager, which looks like it's Mr. Corbin. Cottonwood Municipal Code, Section 2.16080, Powers and Duties states that, "The city manager shall be head of the administrative branch of the city government. Under the specific direction and control of the council, he shall be responsible to the council for the proper administration of all affairs of the city. In addition to his general powers as the head of the administrative branch of the city government, and not as a limitation thereon, it shall be his responsibility and duty. He shall have the power." Two, one, to see that all laws and ordinance of the city are duly enforced and that all franchises and privileges granted by the city are faithfully observed. Two, to exercise control over all departments of the city government and over all appointed officers, employees thereof, except elected officers and the magistrate and city attorney and their respective staffs. Three, to make investigation into the affairs of the city and any department or division thereof, and any contract or the proper performance of any obligations of the city. And finally, to investigate all complaints in relation to matters concerning the administration of the city government and in regard to the service maintained by public utilities in the city. We, the people, respectfully ask the council to compel the city manager to perform his required duties and see that all laws and ordinances of the city are duly enforced. As of yet, none of the code ordinance and laws violated have been enforced. I really encourage all of you, whatever you do, whatever choices you make, the children of your community are looking at you every single day, every one of you guys. And your actions are showing to them what kind of people are we here. So please make a choice that's on behalf of the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Caitlin Hies, you're up next, and then Riley Penkowitz, followed by Lynn Mendel.
Hello. Thank you very much for very patiently listening to all of us. My name's Caitlin Hughes. I'm a teacher and a student at Cottonwood Hot Yoga. I worked nine and a half hours today in Flagstaff, Arizona, and drove down here to be here for this because that's how important it is. The environment that Jennifer Richards has cultivated in her studio has radically changed lives and improved the health of numerous citizens in the Verde Valley, myself included. This is why I cannot and will not stand idly by and watch as crimes are committed against Jen and our healing sanctuary, and neither should you. Cottonwood Municipal Code, Section 1.10.0.010, General Penalty Continuing Violation States. In this section, the term "violation of this code" means any of the following. One, doing an act that is prohibited or made or declared unlawful, an offense or misdemeanor by ordinance or by rule or regulation authorized by ordinance. Two, failure to perform an act that is required to be performed by ordinance or by rule or regulation authorized by ordinance. Three, failure to perform an act if the failure is declared a misdemeanor or an offense or unlawful by ordinance or by rule or regulation authorized by ordinance. In this section, the term "violation of this code" includes causing, allowing, permitting, aiding, abetting, suffering, or concealing a violation of this code as defined in subsection A of this section. This municipal code makes it illegal to violate any of the international building codes and the international plumbing codes. Because many of the international building and plumbing codes were violated, the owners of 702 and 704 South Main Street were substantially injured. We, the people, respectfully request this council look into the violations of these codes and move to implement the required penalties such violations require. I want to extend an invitation. I know this is stressful for everyone. If any of you would like to join us for a hot yoga class, we'd be more than welcome to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Riley Penkowitz, followed by Lynn Mendel. Is Riley Penkowitz with us this evening? No? Okay. Lynn Mendel, you're up next. Not here? Okay. No? Okay. All right, folks, thanks for being here. We're going to go ahead and close the floor to the public and appreciate you showing up tonight. Thank you. Next up is approval of the minutes of the budget work session of April 27, 2021, and regular meeting of May 18, 2021.
Move to approve the budget work session minutes of April 27, 2021, and regular meeting of May 18, 2021. Second.
All right, Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Wilden seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. We'll move on then to unfinished business. Just one item this evening under unfinished business, which is ordinance number 701, Amending the Zoning Ordinance by Amending Section 404, General Provisions J, Walls and Fences, Four Height. This is the second final reading.
Mr. Mayor, council, checked with Mr. Ellis, our community development director. No comments, no input from the community.
All right. Is there anyone here this evening to speak to? Ordinance number 701? No? All right, council, any further discussion? No? Okay. I'll go ahead and motion then to approve ordinance number 701.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilden?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Please read ordinance number 701 by title only.
Ordinance number 701, an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the City of Cottonwood, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance by amending Section 404, General Provisions J, Walls and Fences, Four Height. Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Consent agenda's up next, just four items tonight on the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen sort requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. So I'll read each item out loud. If there's a member of the public that would like to have an item pooled, please indicate so. And of course, council, you know what to do if you'd like an item pooled. Item one is authorization to increase purchase order authority for the cloud IT, for cloud IT services provided to restore the city's email system following the outage that occurred in October of 2020. Item two, extension of custodial services agreement with Melton &amp; Sons LLC. Item three, fundraising, excuse me, funding services agreement with the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. Item four, special event liquor license application submitted by Jesus R. Rodriguez, applicant for the City of Cottonwood, and Thomas P. Schumacher, applicant for the Verde Valley Wine Consortium for an event scheduled for July 4th, 2021, at Cottonwood Kids Park located at 398 South 12th Street. Council, would you like to have an item pooled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We'd like to pull the last item on the consent agenda that no longer needs to be approved.
Oh, okay. All right. Then do I hear, is there a member of the council or of the public that would like to have another item pooled? Okay. Then do I hear a motion to approve items one through three?
I'll move to approve items one through three on the consent agenda. Second.
All right, Councilmember Henry made the motion. Councilmember Naren seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It's approved. New business. The following items are for council discussion, consideration, and possible legal action. Item one is consideration of eliminating late book return fees charged at the Cottonwood Public Library and forgiving any late fees owed.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, Ryan Bigelow, library director for the Cottonwood Public Library. I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider the removal of late fees and to forgive the existing late fees at the Cottonwood Public Library. Staff is making this request for a variety of reasons, but the most important is to increase the use of our library. Currently, there are over 1,600 patrons who cannot use the library due to fees. We would certainly like to welcome them back. To be clear, we're not asking to eliminate fees for lost or damaged items. This is something that we see as necessary practice for our library, but only for late fees, which accrue at 10 cents per day at up to $10 per item. Currently, the library has over $28,000 in late fees owed by our patrons. We would anticipate collecting only a very small percentage of that. Once a patron reaches $10 in fees, their card is barred from any of the YL line libraries, Yavapai Library Network. And unfortunately, many patrons will just choose to not use their library card versus paying those fees. How much does the library collect annually in late fees? In 2017, we collected $6,576 in late fees. 2018, $5,584. And in 2019, $5,481. 2020, we did not collect much in late fees due to COVID. We were not accepting money. But anecdotally, during 2020, we didn't see much of a change in behavior, even though we weren't accepting fees. One of the reasons late fees collected at the Cottonwood Public Library have reduced is because the majority of libraries in our network, the Yavapai Library Network, have actually already eliminated late fees. This is a practice that's pretty common around the country at this point, including the Prescott Valley Public Library and the Camp Verde Community Library. They've both recently eliminated their late fees. But because we share in the collection of late fees, we will collect fees for other libraries who do have late fees. So there's a sharing there. So you will see some collection of late fees if this comes through. Staff also believes the elimination of late fees will improve our customer service and the overall customer experience. We will no longer have to haggle with patrons over 10 cent late fees, and instead, we can focus our efforts on more impactful interactions. Finally, on April 21st, the Library Advisory Board unanimously approved this recommendation to the council. So this has gone through our Library Advisory Board, and they are aware of what we're asking for tonight. Thank you for your consideration, and if you have any questions, I take them now.
Questions from council? No questions? What happens then when somebody checks out a book and just keeps it?
Well, it will go into a lost record then. And so we will continue to charge for lost or damaged items. So we would hold them accountable for that.
Okay. But they would still have a date by which they need to return the book?
Correct.
Okay. And so at what point does it go into lost category?
It's approximately three weeks. If it's after the due date, then it goes into a lost.
Okay, after three weeks of the due date.
So is this for you personally?
Well, I was going to ask. I was going to ask our attorney if I should declare a conflict.
No, I want to hear your answer.
No, just curious. All right. Any other discussion? All right. Well, how about a motion?
Make a motion.
Yeah, great.
I move to eliminate the late fees from the existing late fees. Pardon me, I gotta, I move to eliminate late fees from the Cottonwood Public Library and forgive existing late fees.
Second. Sorry.
All right, Vice Mayor made the motion, and Councilmember Naren? Or was it Kurat seconded it? Okay. Roll call vote, please, sir.
Councilmember Henry?
Yes.
Councilmember Kurat?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Naren?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Olinsky?
Yes.
And motion carried.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, next up and last under new business is resolution number 3094, declaring the city of Cottonwood a bill of rights sanctuary city. And I believe this is back on by Councilmember Naren. I don't know if you wanted to kick this conversation off?
Sure. Since I am the one that missed the last conversation, I suppose it makes sense for me to kick this one off. And just for the public, I was on my way back from a trip and not able to attend virtually last time due to arrangements made long before that was placed on an agenda. And when I got back and I started reading my emails, there were many emails from citizens that were concerned about having such a discussion without a full council and that apparently it ended in a tie, which is the first time I've seen that happen since following the council these many years. So, you know, I take my oath of office very seriously and the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, everything about being in America and being an American is very, very important. I mean, I wouldn't be sitting up here. There are many reasons why I'm sitting up here, but if I didn't believe in all that, I certainly wouldn't be sitting up here. And so after listening to the last meeting, because after I got the emails, the next thing I did was pull up the meeting and watch it myself so that I could hear the conversation. And I listened to everybody's thoughts and concerns and issues with it, but I'm landing on the side of the people of our town, who we all represent, are asking us to take a stand. And we are the voice of the people, and that's part of how I campaigned for this position three times, is as the voice of the people. So if hearing our attorney say at the last meeting that nothing about passing this is unconstitutional, then it makes sense to me to back up our citizens and take a stand to hold all governments accountable to the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and follow in the appropriate amendment process if there is to be a change. I don't think that any politician or any government should be able to make a change without following the proper channels. And so that's my line of thinking on that.
Counsel, is there any other discussion on this? We do have some folks that are in the audience tonight that would like to address the counsel on this item, but if there's any discussion prior, we can have that now.
All right, so folks, there's forms in the back. They're yellow forms. If you haven't filled one out already, please do so, and you can come up and address the counsel. I'm going to read these in the order in which I receive them. Again, just a refresher, I would ask everyone to please be civil, respectful. We did a great job with the Cottonwood Hot Yoga folks that were here, but I'd ask the same two of you, and please address counsel directly and not the audience behind you. And if you could, please, I'd ask you to hold your applause as well. I appreciate that. So let's go ahead and hear then from Carolyn Kurath. And ma'am, I'm sorry if I'm not getting your name right, but I'm doing the best I can. And we do limit comments to a three-minute time period.
I'm recent, 16 months in Cottonwood, but not a stranger. I'm a graduate of NAU classes 61, so that ages me, I know. But yes, I am 82 years old. But I've had experiences from coast to coast. My hometown, my hometown where I was birthed and raised is Dover, New Hampshire, 1623. I hope you all recognize that as a significant date, 1623. I know it's lost on a lot of our young people today, sadly. So I also served as, in California, as a graduate of NAU. I'm, well, suddenly was also a large family member, had 10 children, and degrees of education. I was asked to serve on school board in the Ontario Unified School District of 28,000 students and 23 schools. So I've been involved with issues of public education for over 60 years. And Governor Reagan appointed me to the Educational Reform Commission for the state of California. And then with Gardner, the governor of Washington State after he moved there in '87, appointed me to that educational reform effort. So I'm aware of the disconnect between, I know people, and us older folks, from history and how quickly our country is changing. And I left California, Utah, Washington State, for the same reasons that I referred to what I saw here, with this need to pay attention to the rapid changes that are happening to Arizona, with the influx of Californians escaping what I escaped as well. It's very disturbing to see that we're no longer the safe haven that we were when I moved here in Arizona in 1947, though I continued my deep roots in New Hampshire with every summer returning home. So I rooted deeply in two states, New Hampshire and Arizona. I've seen rapid, rapid change. Fort Worth was also a home for me. Washington State likewise. And now the rapid change, I couldn't believe what I've seen the last four years in my hometowns. And then I see it here, so quickly happening likewise, the need to protect ourselves, the need to prepare ourselves for the rapid changes that overwhelmed us in California and in Washington State. And that's why I ask you to consider the safety, the security of this land of our constitutional foundation that it was based on. And I ask for your consideration if I say these things.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Robert Donahue, you're up next. And again, sir, when you hear that beeping, it indicates that your time's up, so you have to wrap it up. Thank you, sir.
Robert Donahue from Yavapai County, surrounded by Cottonwood. There are a lot of wherestes, therfor's, and be it further resolved in this resolution. But I think what it says is that if someone thinks that a federal or state law is unconstitutional, Cottonwood will give them sanctuary from its enforcement, just as the church would give sanctuary to an outlaw. Who at the city would determine if a given law is unconstitutional? And how would relief be given? Imagine, if you will, that a convicted mob boss has been fined $1 million, and he drives up from Phoenix and claims sanctuary from your third wherestes, prescription of excessive fines. The city is simply not the arena to resolve a constitutional battle and consider the cost to city taxpayers to defend such an action in court. Better check with the city insurance provider to see if they will cover such an experiment in governance. But all is not lost. There is a remedy for an infringement of our rights under the Constitution's Bill of Rights, and that remedy is the courts. Any aggrieved citizen or entity can bring an action in district courts and appeal to appeals courts and even to the U.S. Supreme Court. If your cause is just, other individuals, companies, states will join your cause. The American Civil Liberties Union was founded to protect your rights under the Constitution. They can provide legal talent in your fight. And speaking of legal talent, can we ask Representative Gosar and his minions to fight his battles in the Congress where his peers and legal staff are up to the challenge to keep him in check? City staff and legal help are out of their depth on this national issue. I seem to remember an old saying, "The only thing worse than a dumb law is a meaningless law, author unknown." It is the council's, if it is the council's intention to proclaim their support for the Constitution and its first 10 amendments known as the Bill of Rights, then would it not be more appropriate to make a proclamation doing so rather than a resolution declaring Cottonwood as a Bill of Rights sanctuary city? Words have meaning. The term sanctuary city is certainly a loaded one. Tucson has been vilified and threatened with cutting off federal and state funds by the very same forces that are now proposing that Cottonwood proclaim itself a sanctuary city. Counsel would be advised to table this resolution until competent legal advice is obtained or simply amend it to a brief proclamation of support for the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights, which we all, citizens and counsel, can enthusiastically support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Up next, we have Jeff Timm.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. I'm here on behalf of Congressman Gosar, and thank you for the opportunity to join you this evening. The congressman regrets he could not be here, but he asked that I read the following statement on his behalf. I strongly support the council's efforts to designate the city of Cottonwood as a Bill of Rights sanctuary city. On this Memorial Day observance week, where we honor heroes that sacrificed their lives for our freedoms, I find it very fitting that the council consider this important measure to formally declare the city of Cottonwood supports our God-given freedoms and constitutional protections. Unfortunately, to many Americans, it is apparent that the government and big tech giants are coordinating and trying harder than ever to take those freedoms and protections away. This includes silencing the speech of anyone that varies from their political views and imposing more restrictions and limitations on law-abiding gun owners. But it doesn't stop there. The behemoth federal government is now in your children's classrooms, in your doctor's office, and in your church pews. It's time for local communities to push back. By taking this action tonight, the city of Cottonwood chooses liberty over socialism, freedom over fascism, ensuring that all its citizens, not bid government, reserve the right to decide on matters which concern their lives, liberty, and property. I applaud the council's efforts to stand up against the federal assault on our rights. This simple yet powerful action sends a strong message that the city of Cottonwood will uphold the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. Thank you for the honor of sharing my support for your efforts. May God bless the city of Cottonwood, and may God bless America. Congressman Paul Gosar.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Next up is Mr. Mitchell, John Mitchell.
Counsel and mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak in behalf of the proposal you have before you that was reintroduced. Before you tonight, you will have another opportunity to consider and vote for the resolution 3094. As some of you inferred, seemingly logically reasoning this passed vote, nothing in this first proposal stated that even came close to even insinuating any challenges or intentions to challenge the existing Bill of Rights, but only a reaffirmation and determination to not support any attempts by the state or federal government to rescind or usurp those already codified rights. Even the city attorney and police chief saw the wisdom of this proposed resolution and supported it willingly. I'm now very grateful to see that a wiser and more logical decision was made by some of you to reintroduce the resolution for a vote again. I strongly plead with you all to consider the intention and logical wisdom in passing a resolution for the benefit of all Cottonwood residents. Mayor, remind you, the rights you save by voting yes may be your own. I will be praying for you to make the rights decision for us all and yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Nocido, Mr. Nocido, you're up next.
I'm Michael Nocido. I live in Cottonwood. I had a number of sheets here that I was going to read off of, but I'd like to just thank you for revisiting this, considering it again. I know that John said he was going to pray for you. I looked up into the Arizona Constitution. A wise man shared some things from that the last time we were together. But I noticed a preamble to that Constitution simply states, it's a long, long paragraph. It says, "We, the people of the state of Arizona, grateful to Almighty God for our liberties, do ordain this Constitution." And in Article 2, Section 1, excuse me, in Article 2, Section 1, it states that revisiting from whence you came, remembering where you came from, what put you together in the place you are, and passing, signing this Constitution and making the state of Arizona a state, always revisit that. The Constitution of the United States is what, 200, I'll do the math, 260-some years old. But the state of Arizona is only 100 years, 100-plus years. So the reminder of where they came from when they established the state of Arizona as a state. We stood up at the beginning of this meeting and pledged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it represents, for which it stands. We don't, not because we stand, but that flag represents the republic that we are part of, one nation under God. And the last thing I printed out was your oath of office when you were elected and sworn in. Some of you know, remember this, if you don't, I worked for three different cities for 32 years and was in the Navy for six years. So over that period of time, I probably took an oath of office maybe 16 times, every time a promotion occurred, every time a transfer occurred, every time I received a new stripe on my uniform. And every time, I took that to heart deeply, as you mentioned, and all of you have. And I encourage you to think about that oath you took, think about the pledge of allegiance your, what you're pledging your allegiance to, and I encourage you to pass this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me. I didn't bring 40 people to read the same paragraph over and over again, but the last time we met, I brought 670 signatures on a petition. I hopefully you still have those correctly.
We do, we do. Thanks, sir. Dina Tudor, you're up next.
I'm asleep, Karen Vayner. Been a long day. Can I pass these out?
Why don't you hand them over to the manager? That'd be great.
I'm here to address, I love our country, and I see all the turmoil that it's in right now. And we, the people, we were born on planet Earth. Our race is human. Our politics is freedom. And our religion, it should be love. And I don't understand all of the racial stuff that keeps coming up and this and that. It's always, now they want to turn everyone against white folks now. It's like, it's always somebody, okay? And I just find it all ridiculous.
Ma'am, if I could just ask you to step to the mic, otherwise we won't be able to hear you.
It's not what we're standing for. I don't, I didn't ever think, but I hope I don't offend anybody, but I just wrote a few things down last night. The lunatics are running the asylum. You know, seems like the world's gone mad. This is not about Republicans or Democrats, about evil versus good, nothing new. The difference between humans and animals is that animals would never let the dumbest of the herd lead them. Does that sound familiar or anything? Okay. No one cares that the food and medical industry has killed more people than anything else. It's never addressed. It just keeps continuing. It's hard to eat healthy these days. Governments and corporations are the problems of the world. Oh, the school systems is just another reflection of a poor government. I think that's all I have to say. I had more enthusiasm earlier, but I've been sitting here all evening.
Ms. Tudor, are you for or against the resolution tonight? Before you?
We're standing for our Constitution and not having government tell us what to do.
Okay.
I want freedom.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else?
See what government can do. It's not fair.
Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that'd like to address the counsel? Again, there's yellow forms in the back. No takers? Yes, ma'am. You can come up, give us three minutes, and then if you wouldn't mind just filling out a form afterwards, we'd appreciate it.
Okay. I'm from Sedona. Is it okay for me to speak?
Absolutely. Would you please state your name?
My name is Brandy Wild from Sedona, and I'm, what I've deeply loved about Cottonwood is that it was still sovereign. And us in Sedona, we miss the days that we were sovereign, and it was a great city. And we have been slowly destroyed since it got incorporated. And we have been slowly destroyed since it got incorporated. And I would hate to see that happening to Cottonwood for all of us. This is, this is, you know, we're all in, we're all in this together. We all were born most in this United States of a government by the people, for the people, and with our unalienable rights. And people have tried to take that through the forms of corporation and have maritime laws and, and govern us through more international laws. And I just beg that we don't allow that to happen to this wonderful town. And, and we stand up for what we, you know, were born into. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Ma'am, did you like, would you like to address the council?
I'd like to fill in--
Sure. Great.
My name is Jackie Leslie, and I live in Clarkdale, Arizona. And I am for the resolution for the sanctuary city, because this is very important to our freedoms. And I'm speaking to all of us. It concerns even the ones that didn't vote for our freedoms the last time we were here. And I think we'll remember which ones of you that didn't vote for us. We want our freedoms to live. We want the ability to have a, a business like the lady that was fighting for her business earlier. And that's what this is all about. It's not about gangsters moving in for their freedom. We're going to get the gangsters, no matter who they are and where they're coming from. So, I wouldn't even give that a consideration. To me, that's a, that was a negative comment. But anyway, if you guys don't vote for this, it's going to tell on you that you don't believe in freedom of the, we, the people. And we voted you people in. I didn't, I didn't get to vote for you personally, but by God, I'd see about voting you guys in again, or not. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any others. Sir, would you like to address the council? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Robert Malins. I'm a resident of Sedona, and I own a business here in Cottonwood. I wasn't really prepared to speak tonight because I didn't think I'd be able to, because I don't live here technically. But I think the issue is important enough that I can, I could put together a few thoughts of what this means to me. I completely support the resolution. And the reason is, if you don't have an entirety of government that supports the Constitution, if you only have outlying areas, maybe sheriff's departments, we clearly don't have the federal government that cares at all about following the Constitution anymore. In fact, a large portion of the Congress members and senators are passing bills now that completely abrogate the Constitution. So, if there's not some sort of check on this, whether it be a local level, which does not seem to be as powerful as a state or federal government, doesn't really matter. It has to, people need to take a stand somewhere. And if, if we cannot take a stand that we will protect our constitutional rights after taking oaths to that Constitution as council members, I don't know what good it is to have a council. So, I would really urge all of you to support this resolution, because our constitutional rights are the undergirding of all of our freedoms and everything we are. Without those being supported, we don't have a nation. And there are many people that would actually want us not to have that nation that we've had for these hundred-and-some, not two-hundred-and-some-odd years. They don't want that to be who we become in the future. Many of us will not tolerate this. So, I would ask you, please, to support this resolution and to stand up for the Constitution, because that's really all we are. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. I'm not seeing any other takers, so we'll go ahead and close the floor then and open it up for discussion with council.
Um, so yes, not much has changed. Like I said, the last time, I was raised on, never again. I escaped New York. There's a lot of things here that we take for granted, that, my dad's now seventy-one. We had an interesting conversation two weeks ago about certain things he can't do in New York that we don't think twice about doing here. And I think to take for granted that we have certain rights and that it's not going to be an issue is just wishful thinking. And to approve the resolution that we have isn't, and we're not setting up a blockade on two-sixty, what's why? We're just saying that should something get passed in D.C., we're going to give that a minute before we go and partake in events that may not work out too well in the long run while they're arguing over it in court. So, I guess unless somebody else has something they want to add.
Any other comments to share? I mean, we were all at the meeting, with the exception of Ms. Narin, but, um, no? Okay. I, I just, I would just say just a couple things and just maybe clarify some of my thoughts from last time is that, that, I've taken the oath of office off, you know, six, seven times as well. We've all taken the oath. We all take it very seriously. That, you know, the Constitution sets up three very distinct branches of government, of which we are just the legislative branch. And I think what this resolution is inferring is that we can also then be the judicial branch, which lawfully we're, we're not able to do. So, that's my concern. I think the reason it doesn't keep our attorney up too late at night is because it, it really has no legal effect. So, that, let's say hypothetically, Congress enacts, let's just say, gun restriction. And we disagree with it, and we have already approved a resolution. Let's say we approve it, and we're a resolution city that, that resolution, we can't, we can't use that resolution as, as any defense that, that we're not going to abide by that legislation here. And so, I, I just think it's, again, I think it's dangerous that we're, we're going to leave folks with the impression that, that this is some sort of a, a legal tool that we can use to provide sanctuary to folks that, that, that don't abide by the laws that comes down from the, from the national level. That's, that's, to me, what's dangerous about it. And, you know, because of my respect for the, the Constitution of the United States and, and the three distinct branches of government, I, I can't do anything that is unlawful. And that's really where I'm coming from on this. It has nothing to do with not believing in, in the Bill of Rights, first ten amendments or the Constitution. It's simply the oath that I took requires that I stay in my lane as a legislator and not as the interpreter of the Constitution. And so, that's, that's where I'm coming from on this, and I just wanted to make that clear.
I have a comment. We spent the first two hours of this meeting listening to thirty-four-ish people. We're facing a claim of, of a lawsuit, and it's alleging that we violated our own resolution, Resolution Number 2279. I'm not willing to pass resolutions that will only bring down potential claims and lawsuits against the city of Cottonwood. I reviewed the petitions that were submitted. The vast majority, the overwhelming majority of those petitions were signed by folks that are not residents of the city of Cottonwood. People say that they're in Cottonwood, they're, the vast majority reside in the Verdi villages. I have the petitions and am be happy to share them with anybody that questions that. After my vote at the last meeting, I've had more folks that actually are citizens, now not many, but that actually reside in the city of Cottonwood, come up and thanked me for my vote. And you know what they said? Partisan politics have no place in city limits. That's not something that should be addressed at the local level. And you may laugh, but that's what my voters have said. And when I left the last meeting, Mr. Nocido told me, "We will get you out of office," after, after some clarification there. That's the voters' right, but not somebody that lives in the Verdi villages or in Clarkdale or in Sedona. You can't unless you motivate those that actually voted me into office that I'm representing tonight. So, my opinion hasn't changed. I haven't heard any compelling logic to make my opinion change. I appreciate the comments from Mr. Donahue. I thought they were dead-on, that we're just looking at legal challenges and lawsuits and expensive litigation that I'm not willing to bring down on the taxpayers of my city. Thank you.
I was prepared to say something, and then I, and I thought, this is probably going to pass, but I want it to be put on record that I am against it. By the Fourteenth Amendment, I, I am allowed to vote because I am a woman. My great-great-grandmother was a suffragette and, and went to Washington. I raised my hand, and I swore an oath, and I abide by that. I believe in the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, but it is, this is absolutely and totally meaningless, and I stand by that. By the way, I'm not looking forward to walking out that door and being threatened, ridiculed like we were last time by this so supposedly friendly group. And I also didn't receive, I received, my constituents are, are not in support of this as well.
Full press to do, state.
Any other comments?
Yeah, we're ready.
What is that press?
Folks, folks, I'm sorry, but the call to the public's over. You can, you can speak to us after the meeting, but we've, we've closed the floor. Counsel, any other comments? No? Okay.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3094.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Crott made the motion, and Councilmember Narin seconded. If we could, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Henry?
No.
Councilmember Crott?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Narin?
Yes.
Councilmember Wildon?
No.
Vice Mayor Hulse?
Yes.
Mayor Alinsky?
No.
And motion carried.
All right. Please read Resolution Number 3094 by title only.
Resolution Number 3094, Resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, declaring the city of Cottonwood as a Bill of Rights sanctuary city.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, pursuant to Arizona revised statutes, Sections 38 dash four, thirty-one, point oh three, point, eight point three, and/or A four, the council may vote to convene in executive session to receive an update regarding current and/or pending claims against the city. And I would motion that we move into executive session?
Second.
All right. Mayor, make the motion. Councilmember Henry seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And Ron, are we going back, or are we--
Yeah, we'll kick those folks out.
Okay.
Five-minute break, folks.